We have David Rivera.
That's Agenda.
Oh, that's Agenda. So we have no non-Agenda public testimony.
I'll move Agenda.
Okay. I'll move the Agenda. Got a motion in a second to move the Agenda. Please vote. Okay. Let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone present today and those watching the broadcast and call the April 5, 2016, regular meeting to order with all Board members present except President McCrory, who is absent from today's meeting. If you wish to address the Board today and your name is not on the speaker list printed on blue paper located at both entrances to the auditorium, and if you've not already submitted a request for public testimony form, please complete the form and submit it to Josefine Viorato, our Board Action Officer. Speakers on Agenda items will be called on to speak during the discussion of the Agenda item. Once the discussion begins on an item, no additional public speaker requests will be accepted by the Board. Per Board Bylaw 1025, public testimony on Agenda items is limited to a maximum of 20 minutes per consent and/or action item, allowing for a maximum of 10 minutes per opposing viewpoint. Public testimony speakers are limited to a maximum of three minutes per speaker and will adjust accordingly. Okay. We will move straight to...
I'll move Item E1. Move Staff Recommendation for Item E1. Albert Einstein Academy Charter Middle School Renewal.
We have a motion and a second on E1, and I believe we have no public speakers on Item E1. Any discussion?
I just think Albert Einstein Academy has done a phenomenal job, and I wholeheartedly support the renewal of their charter.
Thank you, Trustee Viser and Trustee Evans. Okay. Why don't we please vote on this item? All right. Congratulations Einstein Academy. Move on to Item E2, Epiphany Prep Charter School. This is action on the renewal of the charter petition and our special education agreement. And we have no... Oh, we do have one speaker on this item. Superintendent, any information?
I'll invite the charter school staff to join us up here in case there are some questions as we continue with the item.
Great. Thank you. Why don't we hear from our Speaker David Rivera?
As he's coming forward, this is to grant a two-year extension based on the limited amount of academic data that's available.
Great.
Good evening. Thank you, Board Members and Superintendent Martin, for providing Epiphany Prep with another opportunity to speak tonight. I'd also like to thank Ms. Park and Ms. Walsh over there for their support over the last two and a half years since we started. We appreciate it. I'm David Rivera, the President of the School and the only Speaker, as last month you heard from a number of stakeholders and parents and students and staff and so forth. We are excited about putting a face to the data to ensure that our mission of transforming urban children for college, career, and life. In two and a half years, we have made progress with our families and students. We look forward to extending our charter for two years per the district's staff recommendation and go beyond just one baseline year of S-BAC scores and new standards and empower our students with achievement worthy of their hard work. Thank you again, and we'll be in the audience if anyone has any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Do we have a motion?
I'll move Staff Recommendation.
I'll second that one.
Okay. Any discussion?
So, I mean, it seemed pretty self-explanatory, I mean, in terms of the fact that it was a three-year initially, and so we're allowed to extend for two years, obviously, since that's what we proposed. And it just coincidentally happened with the timing of the non-testing, right? Standardized testing.
Right. Okay. If no further discussion, please vote. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Epiphany. Okay. Item E3, the Urban Discovery Academy Charter School. This is an action on revision to...
The school's charter.
Okay. Action on revision to the charter to add grades nine through 12. Superintendent?
That's exactly... Yeah, we can hear from staff. This is just, as you said, this is to approve adding grades nine through 12 for the Urban Discovery Academy.
Thank you. Urban Discovery is an existing school that serves grades K through eight and has for many years. Tonight, the school is requesting to add grades nine through 12 at a separate location at 1509 Broadway by housing 129th graders in portable classrooms on a parking lot at that location. Staff is pleased to present an item for approval. It is limited to the ninth grade for the 1617 school year at that site, and you can see in the recommendation language that it does require the charter school by August 5 to ensure that all city required permits in terms of that particular site. It's an unconventional site. It's a parking lot where portables will be brought in, and of course, we want to support this charter school's effort to serve additional students, but we want to do it with the understanding that it's important that this facility is student-ready before opening. There are some additional presentation of findings in terms of the Board's options if it wanted, if the Board wanted to approve all of the grades outright tonight or deny the petition or deny the request.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Park. We've got several speakers: Maylin Levine, Bennett Peji, Kynan Pierce, Jenny Owen, and Myles Durfee.
Can we rearrange the order of those speakers?
Any order you would like, and we'll give you 10 minutes total.
Okay. We're going to have Kynan go first.
Okay. Is the microphone supposed to be on or do I just talk?
I can do that.
Okay. I'm a student at UDA in eighth grade.
What's your name?
Kynan.
Kynan. Thank you, Kynan.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm in eighth grade, and I really like the school because it's project-based and it's in a nice part of the city that I like, downtown, East Village. And what I'm looking forward to is a new high school where I can keep doing these kind of things and stay urban, like how it's downtown and project-based and a collaborative environment with other students that I'm used to be, sorry, that I'm used to, but in a high school. And that's it.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Kynan. Good job.
Good evening, Superintendent, Members of the Board. My name is Bennett Peji. I am the parent with my wife of two students at Urban Discovery Academy, Viviana in fifth grade and Nicolette in eighth grade. Thank you all for your support of steam-focused education in San Diego. We all already know how critical it is to nurture students who are prepared to be part of the innovation economy. And UDA is truly a remarkable school with amazing, talented, and dedicated staff. As former Arts Commissioner for the City of San Diego, my criteria is for nine years, I'm very, very critical of having quality arts in our schools, especially arts that stimulate both sides of the brain to develop the whole child. As former President of both the Asian Business Association and the Philippine American Chamber of Commerce, my criteria is very high when it comes to preparing students with a well-rounded education who will also be able to truly innovate in business and contribute to our innovation economy. But more importantly, as a parent of students in an innovative school in downtown San Diego, my criteria is highest when it comes to teaching our kids to be civically engaged in their community, to embrace diversity and inclusiveness, and be part of the solutions to making our community better. I'm going to tell a quick story. On opening day last year, there was, besides the mayor and council members and community leaders, there were seven media, and they were roaming around the school. One of them was standing near the mission statement, which is on the wall in gigantic letters, and my daughter happened to be nearby, and she read it out loud on camera. "The mission of Urban Discovery Academy is to provide a rigorous education that develops the whole child as a scholar, athlete, artist, and democratic member of society." The reporter went, huh? And turned to my daughter and said, "What does democratic member of society be?" And my little daughter looked at the camera and the reporter and said, "That means we teach our kids to care enough about their community to do whatever it takes to make it better." And the reporter said, "Oh, good answer." She was taught to own the solution, not just to pass the buck away for others to solve it. UDA really models civic engagement and civic spirit in a way that I've never seen before for all the students, not just for my daughters. Let's not end that inclusive model at eighth grade. It should carry on and grow all the way through high school so that they can carry that spirit to make a difference and be a creative problem solver all the way through college. We wholeheartedly support expanding UDA's great academic and community-based culture to include ninth through 12th grades and encourage you to please support it tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent, Board of Trustees, and Staff. My name is Jenny Owen. I am an administrator at Urban Discovery Academy, and I've been there for two years, and I'd just like to share with you all, a couple of you had the opportunity to visit our school, so thanks very much for coming to see what we're up to. And I'd just like to share my experience. So I have about 14 years of charter school experience and at the high school level with a secondary credential in high school. So I do come from a background of seeing great schools and seeing all sorts of schools on-site visits all across San Diego and Los Angeles and the greater Southern California area. And my experience in coming to Urban Discovery Academy is one of just overwhelming greatness. I've been so impressed with the caliber of teaching staff at UDA, the vibrant school culture, and just really what the school is able to accomplish and what they have been able to accomplish, what we have been able to accomplish in such a short time. It truly is a magical learning environment where students are empowered, students are pushed, teachers work really hard, and I just, it seems like in my coming to Urban, it would really be a disservice for us to not continue our program into the high school years. One of my observations in coming and working really closely with our parent community and our students is realizing that our students really need a place to go after high school that, you know, continues the progression of education that they've had so far at Urban. So, you know, over the years, we've lost some students in the middle school grades, specifically in fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, as students start to think about, students and families start to think about where they're going to go in high school after they graduate from UDA. And as you know, there are not a lot of schools like us, there are not a lot of project-based schools. There are High Tech High and some other schools that would be suitable for our students, but the demand far outweighs the capacity that those schools hold. So to me, it would be a disservice to not allow our school to continue simply because there just aren't a lot of options that continue the path of education that our students have had. So our families overwhelmingly would like to see our school continue into the future. It seems inevitable to me, and it has since I've come to UDA, that we continue the greatness of our program and allow it to be more comprehensive for our families. So I really urge you to support the good work that is being done, and I thank you for the opportunity and for visiting our site, and we look forward to working more with you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hi. My name's Maylin Levine. I am President of the Board of Trustees of Urban Discovery Academy. Thank you, distinguished members of the Board and Superintendent Martin, for your years of service to students in San Diego and your consideration today of our request to add ninth through 12th grades. I sent a letter earlier, actually yesterday. I'm hoping that you all received that. I have a hard copy if not, in response to the staff's surprising recommendation. So we were on the docket a month ago, and the staff's recommendation was for support of adding the ninth through 12th grade. And so as of Friday evening at 6 o'clock, we learned that the staff's recommendation was only for ninth grade. And so I feel compelled to communicate to you all how important it is for us to gain your support this evening for ninth through 12th grade. We share the staff's concern about facilities. Of course, we're not going to endanger students or try to put students in some sort of illegal facility. We abide, would always abide by the regulations and laws that govern having kids in school buildings. However, if our approval is limited to ninth grade, it will greatly inhibit our ability to facilitate a long-term solution along with short-term solution for facilities. It also would greatly, as you can imagine, sorry, I all of a sudden got nervous, would inhibit our ability to recruit students at the ninth grade level. I mean, we all recognize that it's unrealistic to assume that students and/or parents would be willing to sign their kids up for a ninth grade program only. I mean, people are making a decision at eighth grade to enter a high school program. They're not making a decision at eighth grade to enter a ninth grade program. So it's actually critical to our growth that we be approved for ninth through 12th grade, and we're willing to accept the contingency that, of course, we would come back to the Board with the facilities issues and concerns rectified before school opening, for sure. So I just ask again for your support and approval of Option A, which is to approve the charter for both, for all four grades, ninth through 12th. Thank you.
Myles Durfee from the California Charter Schools Association. I welcome, good evening, Board Members and Superintendent. I wanted tonight to support Option 1 for UDA as well. This has been a very complicated and complex process, which could be really, is replicated by many charter schools, and one of those components is facilities. And as you know, some schools go through the Prop 39 process to seek facilities. In fact, UDA was beneficiary of being on the MEAT campus last year, which was good for them from that perspective as their building was being built. But if you've had an opportunity to go down to their new building and the deal that they were able to put together without using district facilities on their own bonding process, you can see the great progress that they made at putting a great institution downtown in somewhere where we need to have better options for students. Not that they don't have options now, but that the downtown area, you know, is one that has been increasingly becoming residential over time. So tonight, I'm here to ask you to look at Option 1, knowing that there may be some significant issues that staff and the school need to continue to work on to make sure that this is done in a way that it can happen. I know that there's been a lot of effort put into doing that, but without going through ninth through 12 right now, you know, I expect that they would be coming back to you shortly, and you'd be having this discussion again, and that they really do need to move forward with ninth through 12. So thank you very much.
Was that my timer? Did I just get quacked? Timer.
Thank you, Myles. Okay. Well, why don't we, yeah, Trustee Viser.
I mean, you know, to me, it seems like, you know, this is a rational perspective of staff to go ahead with the ninth grade. But I foresee then next year, we'll be back here authorizing the extension to 10th grade because those ninth graders are going to need somewhere to go. And then the year after that, I foresee that we'll be back again extending to 11th grade, and then the third year, we'll be back discussing extension to 12th grade. You know, I understand the concern about facilities and making sure they have facilities, but in their proposal in 1617, they're going to have zero 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. And in their proposal for the 1718 year, they would have zero 11th and 12th graders. So it seems to me that if we were to approve the ninth through 12th grade now, that would probably save us, you know, having to come back and do it again for the next three years consecutively. And also, it allows for them to have the ability to grow into that position and to pursue facilities for the long term. So for those reasons, I'm going to go ahead and move Option 1, which be to authorize charter, allow them to edit their charter to extend to grades nine through 12. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion for the sake of discussion. Okay. Thank you, Trustee, Vice President Burr. Dr. Evans.
Yes. This is obviously a complex issue, and I did read some of the correspondence that was sent, and I understand the dilemma here, first of all, in terms of opening a high school with ninth grade without the guarantee of continuing on. But on the other hand, I know the staff has worked very diligently to, in each case, to go for maximum success and looking at all the potential problems and so forth. You know, facilities is one. You've also pointed out potential problems with enrollment, revenue projections, which almost make, and this is not one of the options here, and so I'm not proposing it, but it almost seems like it would make more sense, just from hearing what has been said and what I'm reading, to have brought, to bring forward a better proposal a year from now for a full four-year program as opposed to, I'm not proposing that, I'm just saying, of all the different complications, because it is complicated just adding on one ninth grade, but yet you have the staff, you have, could you comment a little bit on what the, on some of these issues about enrollment and revenue projections and so forth? And I guess one option, within these options too, is the issue of, I understand they would not be able to recruit as well for people coming from outside to go only for the ninth grade. They may have confidence in their ability to move forward, to at least have their own eighth graders continue on in ninth grade if they chose to do so and continue from there. But would you comment on some of these findings that you have?
Thank you. I should apologize and clarify that the goal of staff's recommendation is not to have our Board approve ninth grade and then a year from now 10th grade and so on. We don't think that would benefit the school, the students, or the district's authorization process, and I appreciate that comment from Trustee Viser and Trustee Evans. The goal would be, as we saw in last month's recommendation, to do a full ninth through 12th grade approval, and that was the initial facilities plan and documents submitted. At a certain point in time prior to the Board meeting, we did learn that the facility proposed would likely violate an education code provision that does apply to charter schools with respect to proximity to an airport. And so we had to talk to the charter school, of course, and it was decided that it would be withdrawn and researched more diligently as to the plan. If the Board were to take staff's recommendation with respect to Option 2, the goal would be as soon as possible to work with the school, including potentially this year, to have a recommendation for you for the 10th through 12th grade schools, grades. We don't want to do an incremental process, neither does the school. However, at this point in time, as Trustee Evans pointed out, we are later in the year than typical for new petitions or material revisions for a brand-new location or site. And so that's why this is what I would consider a limited approval of what's being proposed for ninth grade for that year for that site. We're highly conscientious of our authorizing duties to know where a school will be before we approve it with sort of a wherever, whenever opportunity. So we want to make sure we know that as a staff where the school will be. You see the August built in because we want to give the school the maximum amount of time to get those city approvals, but at the same time, give staff time to have a chance to review it. In essence, the previous plan, we don't want to repeat ourselves in presenting to you a proposal that might have other restrictions. So this is an unconventional site. We think it's the most supportive recommendation we can make for you at this time. Should the school want to withdraw the request altogether and come back with a full-fledged 9-12 facility plan, we would present that to you. Understanding our role, we have Option 3 for you to deny it, but again, we don't think that is in the best interest of the students whom you've heard from today, who are really ready, willing, and eager to be in that ninth grade program this September. So it represents a balancing of all of those considerations.
Just a question on the timing. When was this petition submitted?
The original proposal was submitted to us in February, and so we presented, we were prepared to present it to you at our March 1 Board meeting. Late February, we did learn about some of those additional restrictions for the proposed site, so it was withdrawn, I believe, February 29. And then we worked with the school over the past few weeks, including conversations today and prior to spring break, to bring to you what is here before you today.
So the traditional deadline of November, is that for new petitions, not revisions?
Typically, the November deadline refers to Prop 39, and as you point out, it is an annual process. For new petitions, outright new charter petitions, there is a spring deadline for being approved by the Board. This is a later revision for grades than we would typically see. We would usually see a planning time so that districts and Prop 39 offers could essentially plan for the year. However, again, we didn't want to be restrictive or punitive on a school that was existing, successful, and could get ninth grade ready to go, but it is a little bit later in the timeline. We did share that in our discussions with the school as part of our concern, but we think that this was a way to get the school going to ninth grade. And I want to emphasize, there's nothing that prohibits the school from working with our office to getting the 10th through 12th grade revision before you very, very soon.
Dr. Whitehouse.
No, this really is a conundrum because I did go out and visit the site and saw the program that they have there. But I also understand that there are sequels and other things that we need to be cognizant of as we move forward. However, I think that they're right, that it's very difficult to start a school with just one grade level and the projections throughout. So my thing would be if there were a way to pull it back and see how far down we could get before we could move forward. I don't know if we're at the timeline already on that.
If the Board were to move towards Option 3, which would be to deny the revision today, nothing would prohibit the school from working with our office as immediately as tomorrow to reformulate a proposal for ninth through 12 again. So I want to emphasize, this is not a new school. It's an existing school with a history with the district, so it's adding grade nine. We did speak with President Levine this morning, as well as over the past few weeks, and we did consider very heavily the fact of recruiting students, projected enrollment, and so asking our Board to approve grade nine and only grade nine does come with, we understand, an aspect in terms of recruiting, and that's why we think it's really important to emphasize, we're not planning to come back with you for 10th grade. We do want to work with the school to immediately get a grade 10 through 12 revision for you. If it feels that adding only grade nine is not supportive of, in the interest of students as a sound educational program, we do have written findings that the Board could adopt to deny the revision outright. So that is an option as well.
But on the other hand, that would make it more difficult in the future years.
Yes.
If you deny the group of students who are already in the eighth grade
Yes.
the opportunity to go into the ninth if they go elsewhere, what is there to bring them back into the fold?
Absolutely. And so typically, we would work with the school in the fall for the next year's plan. That's how Prop 39 works for facilities and planning. You generally plan a year out for budget. So in a way, this represents what I would consider an accelerated effort by staff and the school to collaborate and bring it to you as soon as possible for the quickest opening, quickest, but as President Levine pointed out, not unsafe, not without oversight, and not without consideration of making sure the facility is student-ready.
What would, what would give you confidence, Susan, on the facilities question, to be ready to bring back a proposal that would include the 10th through 12th grades?
Sure. One of the things that our office has considered in oversight over, especially the past four or five years, is understanding that when a charter school wants to locate at a place, not only are the city zoning and permitting pieces necessary, because those are really later on in the process, but that our office can share interdepartmentally for planning purposes where our office will be doing oversight. And so instead of having charter petitions with future grades at TBD locations, we want to know where our office and our district has committed to visiting the program, accepting budget proposals and finances. As our Board has seen, we have seen charter schools close, sometimes mid-year, sometimes facilities-related, but often operationally-related. And so to feel confident, we would want to know where the school would be, that the proposed lease arrangement is realistic to the revenue streams, and that the school is not overextended. In the past, we've brought for you some historical data about projected enrollment and actual enrollment, and we've seen enough of those now that we feel that to be able to recommend a full approval, we want to present those pieces of data for you. So confidence... So confidence, I think, would come from our board, I'm sorry, our office, by way of a location, of financing terms for that location, and then, of course, the school's presentation of the educational program being priority.
Is it appropriate for me to respond to?
It is if we ask you a question, so thank you.
You were talking about facilities, but on your findings, there are issues about how they calculate the projected enrollment and the revenue projections, so in a revised petition, how would that, it's maybe hard to answer, but how would that be corrected?
Sure. For example, number four, revenue calculations. We've had dialogue with the school, and so we have our finance department look at their revenue calculations. If we feel that we are in a negative or non-recommendation position, we do try, with time permitting, to reach out to the school. So our financial folks reviewed, did generate questions to the school, and the school responded. And what you have before you here is, Urban Discovery is a member of El Dorado Selpa, and the El Dorado Selpa puts out specific revenue calculations for their member schools. In talking with Urban Discovery, they use what is considered a school services calculator, which is a broader statewide piece that's not specific to El Dorado. So our accountants, in confirming with El Dorado, as well as our office's communication, we understand what Urban Discovery's calculation is. It's a state number coming from school services. However, from our financial monitoring, we would feel more comfortable and confident with an El Dorado number, because that's the actual Selpa that the school is a member of. So this is the hypothetical broad tool versus the actual member that the school is. I want to put that in context, because the revenue calculation, we're talking about $150,000. That's a lot of money, but it's not going to make the school unable to function. If that were the case, we would not bring a recommendation to approve. So it's something we consider, but we consider it in light of the background of the whole operation.
So if you were doing calculations with this plan to just have the ninth grade, assuming from everybody's saying, that would be lower than the projected enrollment, if it's not a 9 to 12, would that, and I'm assuming what would happen is that the people who love the school and want to continue would continue on in the faith that it would, they would add on the next year's, because they know the school and believe in the school. But would that, I don't know if you can answer that right now, but would that be economically viable if we made the assumption that most of the current kids would stay there and not too many from outside? I'm just making this, would that make it?
That would be one of the challenges that we pointed out in possible denial finding number one. Urban Discovery has mentioned here today that some of the middle school grade levels have had lower enrollment in part because of a desire to begin their high school trajectory. The school itself has a projected eighth grade enrollment of 27 students. We have considered and received-
The current eighth grade enrollment is 27?
27 students.
Current, not projected.
Yes. Current eighth grade at Urban is 27 students. In their projection of 120, we did factor in interest expressed by letters of support from San Diego Cooperative, which is a K-8 program, as well as Museum, a K-8 program. Those schools have current eighth grade enrollment of 22 and 49 students, which brings us closer, but not yet, to 120 students. And a lot of those students would, of course, consider other high schools as well. The other portion that we considered from Urban Discovery's presentation has to do with what they consider overflow or potential applicants from students who are not getting into their first choice, whether it's a high-tech high or district school or other charter school. And so that 120 student represents Urban Discovery's 27, interest from potential of the two charter schools, as well as other charter schools at large. So we do believe it's optimistic based on the numbers. That said, they're not planning to open 10th grade next year, so our recommendation doesn't impede or, you know, stop what the plan was for next year. Because the school, even despite the $150,000, what we believe is a difference in revenue calculations-
That's over three years, though, Susan.
Yes, over three years.
150 over three years, not in year one.
Yes, I believe it's written that way. So it says from '16, '17 through '19, '20.
So that's $50,000 a year.
That's how it's written.
Okay.
And then the other components that we looked at had to do with their overall finances. So we never take a single aspect, a single revenue, our accountants look at from our finance portion and discuss with us the overall revenue, revenue projections. You see in revenue five that the school and many schools do include donations and fundraising revenue. We have heard from the school regarding their plan in terms of having formed a foundation and generating some revenue there, and so those are the reasons why we're here today to recommend approval of the plan. But it's not, as many of you have expressed here right now, it's not without consideration of some very heavy factors.
So can I actually ask Ms. Levine, if the board tonight was to take option two, what would you do over the next period of time to come back and assure us that there's a plan in place that the staff could recommend with some confidence?
Yeah, so the plan two just isn't workable for Urban Discovery Academy, and it will not enable us to fulfill the request, which is to come back with a stable, long-term facility, which we have been working on, but, and we're very close to, but it's highly competitive, so it's a site that we're not willing to divulge yet, but we're working on. And they are waiting to see that we get the board's approval to do a full ninth through 12th grade program.
Okay.
So we can't, we cannot come back in a week or two weeks and somehow magically deliver a ninth through 12th grade facility without an approval on the ninth through 12th grades.
So it creates a problem for us, then, because what you're asking us to do is approve a ninth through 12th grade configuration without us having confidence that you in fact have a facility and that you can support a 10th through 12th grade.
So I see it as an option, it's actually option two, where the contingency is still there, that we need to come back and provide to you the, you know, the documentation on facility with the caveat that it's not just ninth grade, but ninth through 12th grade. So there's no way that we can meet the projections in terms of enrollment with only a ninth grade program. I mean, nobody's going to sign up their kids for a ninth grade program on the promise that there might be a 10th through 12th grade program.
But isn't it, if in a fairly short period of time, you're able to come back with documentation that can satisfy our level of confidence that you can sustain a ninth through 12th grade program, I mean, it seems that your recruitment, I'm not understanding why you would not be able to recruit students if you were going to gain approval tonight for a ninth grade and then within some short period of time, and I don't know exactly what that would be, but I would imagine before the end of this school year, for instance, why you would not be able to then recruit for 10th through 12th grade? Because I'll be honest, the position that you're leaving, I'll just speak for myself, me in, is I'm not clear why I should support even option two if you can't give confidence that, if you can't give us confidence that you can support a 10th through 12th grade. I'm not, that argument to me is an argument for us to simply deny the petition until you're able to come back and demonstrate that you can sustain a ninth through 12th grade.
Well, I don't know how else to explain it, but it's kind of the cart before the horse with the chicken and the egg, where in order to get a facility, you need to demonstrate that you're a viable entity, and so landlords now understand sort of the corporate structure of charter schools, and they understand that they want to see, that they ask us, they've asked us repeatedly to demonstrate our, you know, when was our renewal, how old of an operation are we, they want to check our finances, et cetera. And so we rely on, heavily on the San Diego Unified's board approval to create this ninth through 12th grade program, understanding that we're going to start with the ninth grade. So there is, there are facilities that we're looking at that we could grow into that would be bigger than the facility that we originally were looking for, stopgap for just ninth grade, but they won't sign a lease with us unless we are, you know, a full high school program. And ninth grade, eighth grade parents are interested in making a high school decision, not a ninth grade decision. So, I mean, I think that's really clear.
Well, yeah, but I, so it feels like we're in a situation where we need some sort of contingency, and our problem is if we approve a ninth through 12th grade tonight, is there any recourse that we have if we don't, in the next, you know, period of time, get confidence that there's an ability to sustain a 10th or 12th?
Well, I think there's a contingency.
Can I ask, Ms. Park?
By approving option two, the school would open at the proposed site, and at any point in time between now and, you know, before even it opened, we could get our board to consider and approve a second site, a brand-new site for '17, '18. We believe the recommendation allows the school to open its high school program seamless in terms of what it has asked to do for the '16, '17 school year. This would allow staff to know where it would be, conduct oversight, fulfill the district's responsibility as an authorizer, and would not disrupt what was planned.
So I understand, so, but I think we're, you know, we're in this chicken and egg situation, so is, is there a way to approve an option? If we approved option one, do we have any recourse if the school then, its negotiations for its facility falls apart and it doesn't have a facility going forward?
Well, we would have essentially a charter with grade, potential grade levels at a location that is not yet determined, that the board has pre-approved. And so one of our, so I get, I'm deferring to general counsel.
Thank you. So the Charter School Act requires that the school identify the site or sites at which they intend to locate. It doesn't really contemplate a TBD. However, and I'm not clear if the site that you're currently proposing is sufficiently large to house the ninth grade class and you need to move to house the additional grades, is that the case? And you need a charter in place in order to-
Negotiate those.
Negotiate. So what would happen would be, when the new facility is identified, the school would have to come back for a material revision to the charter, at which time the board would have the opportunity to approve that facility. One thing we might consider is asking whether the charter school would be willing to agree that if they are not able to locate a suitable, if we approve the charter for 9 to 12 today, will they agree that if they do not get the material revision, because they can't find a suitable site, then they will surrender the other grades, the charter for the other grades? We would not want to have to go through a revocation procedure, but I think if we set something up in advance that was mutually agreeable, it would get the charter, the approval they need to move forward with their facility, and it would give the board the security of knowing that we have secured an agreement to surrender if that doesn't happen.
Thank you, Ms. Levine.
So we have our counsel here, too, so can I ask Rick?
Sure.
That's probably the best solution here, because you have to approve any new site as a material revision. That's the, one of the only definitions in the Charter Schools Act that says it's a material revision is a new site. So I think the school is willing to surrender the grades that it doesn't have, you know, if it's unable to procure a site, but we are in this catch-22 situation.
Thank you. I wonder, Mr. Beiser, yes, please. Yeah, I'm already ready to go. Thank you. So I would like to amend my motion to, I move option one, to approve the charter revision to add grades nine through 12 with the conditions and caveats described by General Counsel Andrew Donovan and as worked out through the charter office, so that if the charter is not able to secure a site, that therefore there will be, you know, they'll voluntarily forfeit those grades, because they don't have a facility for those children. And it's making sure that they have the facility for the children is very important per charter code and California state law. Is that completely vague and unclear?
I could probably say it a little bit more simply.
Okay.
You will approve the charter for grades nine to 12 on the condition that the school agrees in advance that if it is unable to locate a suitable facility, which needs to be approved via a material revision to the charter, then it will at that time surrender its charter for the grades 10 through 12.
Second that.
Okay, do we-
That work proves it's-
So that's my motion.
We would, we would want to build in the date-
Yes.
-of August 5th, 2016.
I concur.
Thank you.
So amended.
One comment is, we're, in terms of the students who are signing up, one thing that will happen is we're saying, okay, we're approving this, and if this, these things don't happen by August 5th, these students will, a month before school, be removed, not be allowed to attend the school that they planned to. I mean, so they can make their plans based on going there, and it's going to change at the last minute.
That's correct. We did consider June dates, so that students would have an opportunity to correspond with districts and other programs, and that was a hard consideration between options two and three, but you're, trustee Evans, you're absolutely correct in that it is a late date, and you would typically see a new program come before you from a Prop 39 or new petition much earlier in the year, either in November. A lot of the grants and structures for new schools, this is something in between, because it's not a new school. It is an additional component of an existing school. So in some ways, they have a demonstrated history of showing that they have been able to secure facilities, operate a program, so it's not a from scratch in that point of view.
Just to reiterate, it's really important that we have as much time as possible to secure the facility. So the August date is critical.
Okay. Okay, so, but from what the school has told us, basically, what would happen if the facility wasn't secured in time, they would have the, they would still have the ninth grade or not?
Staff's recommendation with respect to option two is that all city permitting, all city approval-
I'm talking about the, on the motion that we have on the floor.
Yeah, to clarify, is the amended motion, does that guarantee the ninth grade regardless of the school's ability to- Well, I think that, I think that any, any facility would have to meet with city code. Otherwise, it would be an illegal facility, and we, that wouldn't-
My point was, my point was that, according to what you said, that people don't want to go to one-year school, so if, if there wasn't a facility that could house, eventually house the 9 to 12, from what you're saying, the ones who had signed up for ninth grade would likely opt out.
I'm not sure what the motion included.
Well, I think what we're trying to, just to clarify in the motion, and please, Susan or Andrew, weigh in, so I think what, I think what we would prefer the motion to be is that we're approving the 9 through 12 grades contingent on the voluntary surrender of the 10th through 12th grades if you can't satisfy us by August 5th, but that would allow the ninth grade to go forward regardless of what happens by August 5th.
Even though, and even though what you have said is-
Right.
-if people knew it was only ninth grade, they wouldn't, they probably wouldn't want to go there.
Exactly.
So it would essentially end all the grades.
But they wouldn't know it's coming.
Yeah.
They would be guaranteed.
Right, it would signal that it's coming.
Yeah, I just, I just can't imagine that parents put their children in a ninth grade program and that this board wouldn't then allow for those children to continue their educational, you know, track to the 10th, 11th, 12th grade.
And I, I agree with that.
You know, so I, you know, in my opinion, no matter what happens tonight, hopefully we will not pick option three. Hopefully, we will pick option one or two, so that ninth grade can happen. And I humbly disagree. I think that this is a great program, and that I think that there will be children that will enroll in the ninth grade program. And whether or not we extend the 10th through 12th grade tonight, or we do it next year, or we do it in four months, I really feel that that's going to happen, because we, this board has a long history of supporting great educational opportunities for children in our city. And so, you know, I thank trustee Barrera for helping along this, this process, so that we collectively, I mean, this is, this is what we do. We have an open meeting where ideas change and morph as more information comes in to make a better motion and a better plan. And so I absolutely thank General Counsel Donovan for helping us to make sure that we understand the parameters of California Charter Ed Code, which says we have-
we understand the parameters of California Charter Ed Code, which says we have to have a location by law. And, and the Charter Office for trying to work with them to get the facility, because any facility, whether it's ninth grade or more, has to meet city code requirements. They have to. And, and so I agree to all of those conditions and caveats, and I wholeheartedly support the August 5 date. If things don't work out by August 5, then, you know, I know we have lots of high schools that will welcome these children in, and I'm sure that we will bend over backwards to find them room in some of our phenomenal high schools in San Diego Unified.
Yes.
I think what you were trying to do was
Yeah.
to combine one and two
Mm-hmm.
so that we have one motion. We approve Number One, and then also, that implies that Number Two is approved also because we have the ninth grades taken care of.
Yeah.
And so I would support that.
Yeah. The issue, and I appreciate everything that Mr. Boiser just went through, but I think the issue that we're just trying to protect in the case of us approving Option One, the amended motion, is that if we get to August 5 and things fall apart
Mm-hmm.
and we've now got students that are prepared to go to ninth grade at the Urban Discovery School, that those students, I imagine a lot of students would at that point say, yeah, or a lot of families would say, let's find another high school. But that's cutting it short. So I would want the ability of those students to actually attend the ninth grade at Urban Discovery and then have, you know, if necessary, then have the year to find another high school.
One method in looking at Option One and Option Two would be to take the language of Option Two, approve the charter revision to add grade nine through 12 with all the subject language regarding city approval, and then at the end of it, where it says to house the students at the Broadway site for grades nine in 2016, '17, and grades 10 through 12 at an identified site for later years. That would keep the August 5 date. It would inform both the school and anyone they're negotiating with that there is an approval for later grades for later years, subject to that identified site coming to you and our office for oversight by August 5, 2016.
Great. And I love how it's a combination of Option Two. So amended.
Right.
Is there a second on my motion as amended?
Want to second it again?
Okay. Yeah.
I just had a question. Would there be a notice or provision that we would add that 10th through 12th grade parents would be aware that we've not secured a facility, just so that we're, it's transparent?
The Board's recommendation with the amended language would be, become part of a Board excerpt letter that we would share from the Board Office to the charter school, and I would imagine they would use that in their negotiations for facilities. And Urban Discovery has a very detailed website in communicating to parents, and we could certainly work with the school to monitor that language for recruitment has that included.
The potential 10th to 12th grade parents would be aware.
Correct.
Okay.
So that we would have that August date along with the later years so that there's assurance from both the recruiting families, the negotiating leasers, and the school as well, in being able to accurately represent itself.
We've seen the sausage-making process at work. We've got an amended motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, please vote. Okay. Great.
I'll move, I'll move item E4.
Second that.
All right, E5, okay.
Congratulations. I'll move item E5.
Second it.
All in favor? And I think we have no further non-agenda public testimony? Is that correct? Okay, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. I like the way you guys all, every time we have time. I like the way you guys are proud. Sure? Yeah, I want to help. 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 I want to help.